We're going to start with the agenda portion of the meeting. We got ordinances on second reading. Orders to amend and supplement the general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title three, revenue and finance, chapter 3.28, fee schedule, section 3.28, one twenty parts of recreation fees. Amen to recreational fees, baseball days. Number two, amend salary orders, title 2018, 2020, title deputy police chief. And we have orders on first reading, orders to amend and supplement the general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title ten, vehicles and traffic, traffic control regulations, schedule twenty-two, traffic control signals. Delete French Street, Joyce Cameron Avenue, add yes.
Counselor President, if I could just interrupt, I apologize. We're going to ask that that was the case in the interview said in January. And realized we were short a day or two on the time of publication.
All right, and we have resolution. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refunds for deemed tax surrogacy. Four, approve city council meetings. Five, resolution to approve the parole of abandoned property, scattered site redevelopment plan. Plan board for review and amend and add three properties, pretty recent, now in sixty-four Handy Street. One sixty-four Commercial Avenue. Six, authorize reimbursement for multifamily property owner for trash recyclables for the year 2018. Trash amount five hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars fifty-seven cents. Recycling amount fifty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars fifty-eight cents. Seven, approve resolution for authorization to enter into agreement with Electronic Recyclers International Incorporated for e-waste recycling term, January first, two thousand nineteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Eight, resolution authorizing budget transfer, two thousand eighteen to nine. Authorize application acceptance of execution of grant for Division of Highway and Traffic Safety for Junk Driving Enforcement Fund Grant fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Ten, approve amendment of resolution R dash one twenty-one eight oh five, reason additional amount of eight thousand two hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works with Morton Salt Incorporated for treated rock salt, public works and water. Not to exceed eight thousand two hundred dollars. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the amount of the original contract. Eleven, approve request for street closure requested by Sedan Street. Sedan Street Reform Church, location drift street between Sedan Street, Townton Street, for Christmas party for children in the community. Date Saturday, December fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Time eight AM to three PM, down toward Tunchee, police at Tribune. We have twelve, approve amendment of resolution, reason for additional ongoing tax appeals for two thousand eighteen. The Division of Assessment withholding longer Moran Dunn's Fugus LLP for Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Division of Assessment from one hundred and five forty-five thousand to one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Thirteen, approve authorization for rebid for Assistant City Attorney, rebid specification number seven oh four. Nineteen, RFP. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero nine one eight two eight. Change order number Garden State Highway Products Furnish and Deliver, two thousand eighteen regulatory sign. Specification number nine two five eighteen. Amount three thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the amount of the original contract. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero nine one eight six five. Change order number three, credit AA Verms LLC to furnish and install additional two feet of concrete work for fitness stations. Specification number nine one seven, eighteen RA. Credit amount seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars twenty-four cents. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the original contract. Eighteen, uh sixteen, approve award of contract for Clean Air Company property maintenance repairs contract for the plant movement system, diesel exhaust system at all three fire offices. Term twelve month period commencing December twentieth, two thousand eighteen, and ending December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. Seventeen, authorize purchase by the fire department under New Jersey State approved COOP. Sixty number sixty-five MCES, CCSP. Education Service Commission of New Jersey Pricing System from Bear Ford LLC. One, Ford Explorer options, not to exceed thirty-three thousand two hundred and four dollars and seventy cents. Eighteen, approve on premise raffle merchandise at Helgues Hotel. Ten, Livingston Avenue for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Long Island County. Date Saturday, February eighteenth, February ninth, two thousand nineteen. Nineteen, approve on premise raffle at the Helgues Hotel for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Long Island, Little Seax County. Date Saturday, February ninth, two thousand nineteen. Twenty, approve on premise raffle at Cove Campus Center for its build of fifty-nine Bill Grove and New Jersey Forest Association, date March sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Twenty-one, approve off premise raffle merchandise at Cove Campus Center. Fifty-nine Bill Grove, New Brunswick, for New Jersey Forest Association Incorporated. Date Saturday, March sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Twenty-two, approve off premise raffle fifty fifty at two twenty-two Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey for Asher Emeth Temple Memorial Temple. Date May seventh, two thousand nineteen. Twenty-three, resolution authorizing cancellation of various outstanding checks. Twenty-four, authorize application acceptance of grant, Little Seax County for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. It runs reliance on substance abuse prevention cash match, seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty cents. Grants thirty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero four one four three one. Reason store remediation at former police headquarters with Remington and Varick Engineers for supplemental services for LS, LS RP services for fuel storage tank removals. Not to exceed eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Approve of this of these supplemental services will constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the original contract. Twenty-six, approve amendment of resolution, change order reject construction, preparation, dining construction, crosswalk safety improvements, and roadway warning lighting systems. Liaison Comstock Street, Delavan, and Varick Streets in Point. Specification number eight eight one dash fifteen, credit around thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the amount of the original contract. Twenty-seven, approve comparison to the, uh, comparison to the resolution on retirement. Twenty-eight, approve comparison to the resolution on retirement. Twenty-nine, approve resolution to authorize execution of innovation and grant agreement. Thirty, approve authorization of agreement with the professional, the New Jersey Professional Management to retain the services of management consulting firm for executive search director planning, community, and economic development. Thirty-one, approve amendment of resolution R dash one two one eight two three. Reason to add new dates, approve relaxation of noise orders requested by M quick crane. Plate reason to place a crane in Bristol Myers Squim, Children's Hospital PD of Pediatric Insurance. Way in order to perform cold replacement of roof of the hospital. Date Saturday, January fifth, two thousand nineteen, ultimate date Saturday, January twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Thirty-two, authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax utility accounts. Thirty-three, approve amendment of resolution R dash one 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 eight four five. Reason change of date, approve request of use of city property requested by Community Baptist Church. Location sidewalk in front of the train station for Christmas carols, receiving folding gift cards to lead in homeless. Date Saturday, December twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, time two PM to three PM. We have public discussion on the basis of the social. This meeting now come to order.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Fleming. Council President Fleming, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do the order. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied. The annual notice which gave sufficient notice, time and place and conduct of all public meetings in municipal council or city of New Brunswick has been filled with a city clerk and has been placed an appropriate bulletin board in lobby of city hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey and transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Review. The police, uh, rise up, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We please remain alone in silence, especially those that are less fortunate during the holiday season and those that have continued to be separated, ready for their families away, faraway lands. And just pray for our country, keep them in thoughts. Thank you. Motion, minutes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we have any reports of correspondence by the city clerk.
Miss Holico regarding a claim. The correspondence was forwarded to the appropriate department.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, so now we have new public hearings. So we have orders on second reading. Number one, orders to amend and supplement the general orders of the city of New Brunswick. Title three, revenue and finance, chapter fee schedule, section three twenty-eight, one twenty, parts of recreation fees. Amen, recreational fees and baseball days. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this one? Seeing none?
Move your orders.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, we have none on first reading. Oh no, I'm sorry, we have second one, I'm sorry. Uh, number two, amend the management salary orders from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, title deputy police chief. Anybody from the public like to speak on this one? Seeing none?
Move your orders.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, then we have resolutions, number one.
Mr. Counselor, before we just pass that first ordinance, can I get a motion to table O dash one two one to O three?
Yes, okay.
That was the one that we were looking for.
Okay.
For you, we're gonna, we're gonna do that in January. We just need a motion table.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, then we have resolutions, one through thirty-three. Anybody from the public like to speak on the resolutions?
Uh, yes, Daniel Moore, three thirty-three, from the Sixth Street. Yes, I'd like to ask about twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Mr. Lattin, when will you be retiring?
December thirty-first of this year.
Will you still be in touch with the council?
Only if they want me to.
Okay, so maybe after the meeting, if I can get from the year that you started and then as we know, it'll be from December thirty for the Michael Gifford date, please.
I started in nineteen ninety-three.
Okay, thank you, and then that's all. Excuse me, twenty-eight, Mr. Patterson. Will he retire in also?
He's retiring at the same, on the same date, and he started, I think, five years prior to me arriving here. So let's say nineteen eighty-eight, I believe. Glenn can speak for himself, I shouldn't do that, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, I have to make sure I write it down correctly. Uh, well, I just will remind you, remind you, hope to see you again. Like I said, I plan on seeing the both of you again, but I get situated, who's one might ask and what your ears are. But I will just say, just remember one thing, don't forget to do before you do retire. That's where you did promise, uh, the water, water fountain, grinding water fountain for Baker Park. That was a promise, just don't forget, forget before you retire. But enjoy, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I thank you for working with you, all the things that you've been good and help with, for both of you, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes, and I'm staying in this mission one twenty-one eight thirty-five.
So noted. Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, we're going to.
This is Counsel President, my understanding the members of council desire me to lead into the record here at the public meeting, resolution R dash one two one eight five one and eight five two. With our congratulating resolutions to Mr. Lockman, Mr. Patterson, respecting this. With council's permission, I will, sorry, I'm sure. Okay. R dash one two one eight five one, by the municipal council. Whereas Thomas A. Lockman III is retiring from his twenty-five year career as the New Brunswick City Administrator. Whereas Tom has served as the New Brunswick City Administrator since June nineteen ninety-three. Prior to coming to the city, Tom worked for the New Brunswick Housing Authority from June nineteen eighty-one through August nineteen eighty-five, and the New Brunswick Parking Authority from nineteen eighty-nine through nineteen ninety-two. And whereas Tom, while not a New Brunswick native, and sometimes referred to as a carpet bagger, has come to be known as one of the city's own due to his tireless commitment to the city and its residents. And whereas Tom, as city administrator, utilized some of his unique talents as historic restoration inspector, down wire specialist, feline expert, and employee referee to advance and represent the best interests of the city and the well-being of his residents on a daily basis. And whereas Tom's lovely wife of thirty-three years, Diane, will look forward to meals on the table by five thirty PM, the laundry completed each day, and a manicured morning garden. And whereas the dedication and commitment of Tom will be missed not only by mayor and council, but all those with whom Tom has worked with at the city and the residents he has served. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that the members of council express their sincere appreciation and thanks to Thomas A. Lockman III for his service as city administrator for twenty-five years. Their best wishes for his continued success and fulfillment in both his professional and personal life and many years of enjoyment in his retirement. And be it further resolved that this resolution be engrossed in the permanent records of council and that a certified copy of this resolution be presented to Thomas A. Lockman III for his tireless service to the people of New Brunswick with deep appreciation and sincere affection.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that was very kind, but it was quite, quite resolute. Um, if I could just say something, it's been my honor to serve this community. It's been very good to me. I hope I brought some value to the table, and I thank you, the council, for your support and your faith in me over the years. I thank Mayor Penney for the same, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna speak now, or are we gonna wait?
I'm just gonna read Mr. Patterson.
Okay. Stop to read this resolution.
I just wanted to say something from second.
Yeah, is it? Yeah, we're going to read theirs, and then we're gonna open.
Okay.
R dash one two one eight five two, by the municipal council. Whereas Glenn S. Patterson is retiring from his employment as Director of Policy Planning and Economic Development after having been employed by the city since nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Glenn has served the city and its residents, starting first as a housing development analyst, and ultimately in nineteen ninety-one, filling the role of Director of Policy Planning and Economic Development. And whereas Glenn has served the city, lending his knowledge and talent for many of the years that redevelopment was initiated and during which many of the new projects in the city were planned and built, all of which required zoning planning and technical knowledge as well as attention to detail in the implementation of creative planning features and financing mechanisms. And whereas Glenn will be remembered as a person knowledgeable in all aspects of the city's redevelopment renaissance who constantly displayed the highest degree of energy and commitment along with the highest level of proficiency within the city organization to create a color chart, color graph, or PowerPoint presentation. Whereas Glenn's influence on city government goes beyond that of planning and zoning, providing insight and guidance over the years regarding such topics as rent control, housing rehabilitation, sick leave benefits, and homelessness. And whereas council finds and determines that Glenn is most deserving of his retirement and looks forward to seeing him cycle throughout the city in the years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that the members of council express their sincere appreciation and thanks to Glenn S. Patterson for his service as the Director of Policy Planning and Economic Development and their best wishes for his continued success and fulfillment in both his professional and personal life and many years of enjoyment in his retirement. And be it further resolved that this resolution be engrossed in the permanent records of council and that a certified copy of this resolution be presented to Glenn S. Patterson for his tireless service to the people of New Brunswick with deep appreciation and sincere affection.
So thank you very much to the council, the staff, Tom. It's been a pleasure working for you for twenty-five years. The other department heads that I've served with and the residents here. I've had some, you know, interesting times in this chamber, both with the council, planning board, zoning board, on a lot of the issues of the day here. It's always been fun to engage council members, the public, in the public debate and so forth. And I'll definitely miss that, but looking forward to doing some other things of my life also. But I will be around town, yeah, you'll see me around town on my bicycle, so say hi.
I'd just like to say congratulations to both retirees. Didn't mean to say anything tonight, just came to get the paperwork. But I guess I got caught up in the moment. I just want to tell Tom that I know a lot of times things wasn't pretty, but it was good working with you, Tom. I've known every business administrator since Gregory Farragut, and you've been the best that I've seen to work with. Doesn't mean we agreed all the time, and you allowed me to disagree, but we still work. And I really appreciate the work that you helped me with, Dr. King. And congratulations, and you finally cracked ice. Thank you, Janet.
What else?
I'd just like to say thank you to the both of you for helping making New Brunswick safe along with the city and council, that you will be missed, but like I said, I hope to see you soon after I do get something together as a retirement for you two. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, Daniel.
Before we get to public discussion, I want to congratulate both of you, but look forward to mine in about ten years. Teaching perfection. Also, on behalf of my family and the city council, I want to express my condolences to Mr. Shammy and Mr. Egan, especially during this holiday time. My family is definitely keeping in prayer, and we have expressed our condolences.
All right.
I just want to thank everybody that showed up for my recent sadness. But I do want to talk about a little bit and thank Glenn and Tom for a great job that they did for the city. It's not easy working in public government, and these guys are gonna be tough shoes to fill. And I thank them for their service, I really do thank them.
I thank them both, or whatever, I think I first met Tom. Probably scared the hell out of his son when I showed up at the game, having been in school there or whatever. But thank you for everything, all questions and answers, I'm glad the same thing. Hope people see around the city, be able to call on you when we can.
I just want to echo what Mr. Mio said, that sometimes has to be a little bit contagious, you know, questions, answers, and things that we might have not agreed with sometimes. But it has been a second family. So we might have our disagreements for you guys, both of you, especially you, Mr. Lattin. As I have two years more than anybody else sometimes. You have to be more than gracious, and you have to be sent to the city of New Brunswick with a simpler, like, a track record. And both of you will be great in this.
Since that portion now, we'll open up to the public discussion. Please give your name and address to the record, and remind you, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Walter Harris, one fifteen Truman Job, as in New Jersey. Public advocate for the homeless community. I'm here on behalf of the mentioning you made at the beginning of the meeting. You're saying I'll have a moment of sound for the vulnerable populations and the most at risk, or, you know, people with homeless, pretty much. But I'm sorry to drop this on you, but nonetheless, in two thousand seventeen, there was a law placed into action. Pretty sure you guys are aware of it, called S ten eighty-eight. And S ten eighty-eight clearly states that you were supposed to wear that code blue when it's forty degrees and under. This happened in two thousand thirteen from Commonwealth County, a pastor found a dead person in the southeast army clothing then. Nonetheless, my organization, Shiloh, Supporting the Homeless, Innovative, Loving Others, has been out here for the past four years. Prior to that, I've been homeless, on and off, frankly homeless since two thousand and three, and worked with all leadership within the city government. More so, um, there's only been one code blue enacted, and this is coming from the homeless community that be. As you know, you see them in front of the library, you see them in every event, never give them this back. Um, there's been a solution, and even the reason you're using the guest house, which when I was a homeless guy debating with you in two thousand fourteen, I asked that you use the guest house and mentioned it as a location that's convenient for everyone. But our ask is simply to be the coordinator for this. I'm aware of the Office of Emergency Management, Tom Rakowski is the oversight and coordinator of this, as well as they designated to the public, or they designated to the municipal government, also Department of Community Affairs. Both centers are aware of the situation, and I'm asking that we have a coalition. I was told four years ago, formed coalition, we have a coalition of interfaith groups, all Ruckus clubs, and we're very close to creating a chapter on Ruckus, Flauke. Everyone is aware of the homeless epidemic, but there is no solution besides emergency shelter. In every city in the nation, chronic and notable homelessness has increased. You can check your Monarch Housing, one at Time Count two thousand and eighteen, or you can just go to the bill on S ten eighty-eight. But you're also involved in human rights, because a cruel and unusual punishment, people sleep outside when clearly it may not be near daytime, be under thirty-two, but by night it turns to like twenty-two. So I'm asking for your sympathy, your compassion, and to have, not even immediately, because you're aware of the fact that we have coalitions with all different folks. United Methodist Church had someone sleeping in front of the door for over a month, and all she needed was a birth certificate from here, but no one volunteered to do so, nor was she even willing to enter into these services. So from, I work with the Little Seax County Human Services Advisory Council. I'm working with Bridget right now, working with other organizations, but nonetheless, we're not addressing emergency shelters. Apartment housing, by the time the eligibility happens, you clear out a house, the homeless have already went to jail because there's no public place for them to be. Elijah Promises already dropped the ball, person has split their head open, fell, there was all type of drugs and everything going on, so they pulled them from that control, and you can't beat a dead horse. I have to trust the homeless, I have clinical experience in charities, as well as Elijah Promises, and I just came from a moving on support of housing training from Ruckus School of Social Work, as well as going to the Garden State Video Six Week Workshop with the National Coalition of Homeless Hands. So please, everyone knows my number, my name is Walter Harris, Executive Director of Shiloh, Supporting the Homeless, Innovative, Loving Others. And we have over fifty, sixty-plus volunteers, and like you said, from January, from now to January twenty-second, there will be no, there will be no Ruckus students or whatever to volunteer at these sites. We have ample volunteers, ready to volunteer, from seven at night to seven in the morning. We don't need any food, we don't need any clothing, we have a caterer from the Hilton NBC Suites, we have other cooks and chefs. All we're asking is that we sit down and we discuss this seriously, due to the fact that people are outside right now, freezing their butthole, dying in the streets, I've just encountered people with HIV that I've helped. I've got a veteran that was in the cemetery for over thirty years, got him full housing in section eight. So they can blackmail my name all they want, but my services are effective. So I'm asking that we operate this emergency shelter, you can use the guest house. And mind you, the executive director of the library was here with myself debating on the municipal ID, which you passed along. Because when the police illegally take their stuff and take their identification, that's against the law. So now I can't go to the motel to get out the cold, because I have no identification. And there's a law totally saying that I have the right to free travel and not to have my bags taken. Thank you for your time, I have twenty-six seconds. So that's it, you can check it out yourself, S ten eighty-eight. I'm willing to work with everyone, you know, I'm not sealed off, but that control factor and whoever's running it, cafeteries, Elijah Promises, all that needs to go out the window because they don't have to trust the people. You can't even go in the soup kitchen, the bathroom's not even open. So you're forcing people, what, to go hide behind the shelter, you can't go behind the shelter because now they have a gate up. There was people literally sleeping in the sh- people literally sleeping in the shed behind the emergency shelter, because forty beds does not suffice, the women's shelter does not suffice, and the only remedy, if you get me till March, I guarantee you I can dramatically lower the numbers of homelessness, and you won't see anyone on those streets, thank you very much.
Mr. Jones, have you given brief summation of the services and the efforts that the city has been doing for the homeless population, just to make sure that everybody's somewhere?
Yeah, I don't think there is a brief summation of services that the city is doing or the county's doing, Harris is correct, and that the percentage has spiked, I think New Jersey's at ten point one, as far as the increase in homeless population, but there's been a spike all across the country, unfortunately, and that's not, you know, due to any one particular thing, it's the economy, you can blame it on several different factors of why homelessness has spiked across the country, you can blame it on morality, if you want, there's a piece there of how individuals interact with the homeless population that puts a lot of individuals in a bad space, in terms of Code Blue, state legislation is not forty degrees at all, that would be, that would be everybody, that's why state like New Jersey, so it's like twenty-one counties, all twenty-one counties.
Excuse me, can we please have my board, he's the speaker right now, and we already have five minutes, can you please?
The legislature basically states if it hit twenty-five degrees or below, any of the counties of the state of New Jersey is supposed to put a Code Blue plan in place, that plan has been in place for, Governor Christie signed that law into place, the city of New Brunswick operates at twenty degrees, only because we've bombarded with all of the counties homelessness and beyond, per fanboy who operates Code Blue, only particularly, they don't even announce their Code Blue to the county, so they kind of keep it close to folks, and if you find out about it, you find out about it, they also use municipal staff, they're looking to outsource their work, and it's a forty thousand dollar project that they're not receiving any money from, from the county or from the state, we're not receiving any dollars from any particular source, we run our Code Blue out of our administration. The Henry Guest House has been in use for a secondary site for years, this is not something that was referred to us for us to use, we're actually looking at moving our Code Blue location to another site out of the Henry Guest House, the Henry Guest House is definitely perfect, in terms of location, standalone building, proximity, and if we can get proper coordination with a couple of other groups, it would be perfect, in terms of volunteers, we have tons of volunteers, we work with ARM, we work with the Houses of Worship, we work with city employees, county employees, Rutgers University, of course, there's so many things that we could talk about in terms of this, we have several coalitions, I would say that it's unfortunate that we're not in a position to help everyone, we are putting pressure, we are applying pressure, we need to apply pressure to other municipalities, I've been training other municipalities on how to run Code Blue, so over the past two years, we've actually maybe, we should have maybe about four to five different municipalities now doing Code Blue, including East Brunswick and Hound Park, which is a first, again, for a number of years, we've been the only municipality in the county running an effective Code Blue, I would say also with the added, and I mentioned this at the last council meeting, with the added resources of everything we're going around, opioid addiction, substance abuse, everything we're going around, reentry, having Elijah's Promise here, having the major hospitals here, Coming Home is here, they just announced their emergency room integration program, where they're going to be doing the House of First model for twenty-five vouchers for full rent, with casework, that's a pilot that's done here and is funded by the state, with a county seat, we have municipal ID, we do do some sort of free birth certificate program, I can go on and on and on, we have a homelessness coalition that meets monthly, we have Rutgers Behavioral Health Clinic, Chandler, I can go on, yes, there's a ton of work to do, I will also add that, this is important, I don't want to ramble, but it's very important that we also realize that not every homeless individual wants to go into housing, we can, we beat down these doors, and we beat down these communities day in and day out, you'll, out of the five people that are homeless, you'll find three that did not want to go into housing, because of either A, trust in the system, which is, I get that, mental health, addiction, there's rules, I don't know how many people we try to help get into shelter, where they've been kicked out of several shelters for stealing or something else, or drinking problems, they don't want to go to rehab, so it's not a clear cut, you give them a house, they're in, and they're good, there's multiple layers of this onion that we've been peeling for, you like that one? Okay, so that we've been peeling for years, so I agree with Mr. Harris in certain areas, we have this conversation every winter, but we do know homelessness is a year-round thing, and unfortunately, I only have this conversation with Harris during the winter, so if we can have this conversation year-round, I would love to be able to help out, be able to work together, but I can't stand by and listen to somebody saying that we're not doing everything that we should be doing, yeah, we got one way to go, and that's across the country, but if people want to help out and be some of the assistance, then we're all for it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I can't rebut it, we're just talking.
How are you all doing? Peter Hanson, I live in Danellin, work for Plainfield Boys and Girls Club, work for children for years, I've been working side-by-side with Walt for the past four years as well, and try to help out the homeless in our community in Brunswick, you need, you can say all that good stuff about these degrees and freaking, these Code Blues and these terminologies that y'all want to use, but at the end of the day, you are not helping us help the homeless, we have garnered so much support from everywhere, from all different counties, from all different areas, all different religions and peoples, just wanting to come together and help these people out, and yet we aren't getting help, we're not asking you guys to do our job, we're just asking you to help us do our job, we want to help, we want to give these people a chance, Walt is the perfect man for this job, everybody knows him, he has the support in the community, you need people like Walter to help these homeless people, because they trust him, they relate to him, yeah, of course, the homeless, yeah, there's homeless that are on drugs, but there's also homeless that I've personally seen trying to get some sleep in the elevator, because it's too cold outside, on Brunswick, train station, and y'all going to tell me that that's acceptable, for real? If you can tell me that all of you can handle this weather right now, we'll shut up, we will stop doing this and handle, if you can spend one night out in the cold like the homeless do, in the weather that you say that, uh, twenty degrees is all right, they can survive, if you can survive one night there comfortably, and still be able to handle your business at the end of the day, we'll stop, because you're right, if you can handle that, we issued this challenge to Rutgers students to do that, maybe two people want to do it, because they're scared to do it, because they know in the heart of hearts, it's not possible, you know in your heart of hearts, as grown men and grown women, that this is not, these are not survivable conditions for long-term, how do you expect people to get to their job, that yes, they are homeless, but they're still working, how do you expect people to do their job correctly, if they're freezing, if they're not fed, you can't expect that, I get it, there's going to be people that fall through the cracks, everybody knows that, I work with kids, there's always that one kid that just gives you attitude, has no aspirations to do better on his test or her homework, but I have seen through the past four years, good people just looking for a way out, I have seen people that have such little trust in the system that they've literally made their own community outside, how do we let that happen, how do we ignore that, these are your people, do you not care? Why doesn't an outsider from your community have to tell you about yourselves, are you going to say that I'm stupid just because I'm young, I'm not stupid, I'm moral, y'all know better than this, and you are better than this, you preach a good talk, you are obviously homeless people, I know you guys have to look after the city as a whole, but the homeless are part of the city too, and you need to give them a chance, and give people like Walter a chance to help these people, people that know what the hell is going on, y'all, to be frank, I mean, how many of y'all have been front and homeless that are in your positions right now, how many of you actually know what it's like, how many know, you know what that struggle is, if so, please raise your hand, please, yeah, and how much, and you know, you know what it's like, so, why is this Code Blue okay, why is this all right to do, why, I know it's not easy, but we need help at the end of the day, and you know that, we need more than just this, they can, it's not feasible to survive in twenty-degree weather, twenty-four, seven, it's not, you can't do it, I can't do my job, and my job, I work in a warehouse at night as well, it's freezing temperature out there, we get sweatsuits to keep warm, and heaters all around us to get our job done, if we don't have those, I can't do my job, I can barely move my fingers with the gloves that they give us, but again, all that extra stuff, the gloves and whatnot, bad days on the situation, the soup kitchens, bad days on the situation, you need case management, you need people who know what they're doing, if I'm wrong, don't take it seriously, but I think you know what y'all need to do, you can't say that Walter, that Walter, that Shiloh, that our case is just nothing, because we've garnered support from so many different people, like I said, the churches, we have a communist group that helps us, ironic, you have people from all over who see this problem, you have Rutgers students, young people who want to make a difference, you have front and homeless that have found homes, that understand what we're doing, all I'm asking is for you to recognize it too, stop brushing it under the rug like it's nothing, that had been your family, that had been your parents, I know all of y'all would have done whatever it takes to help them out, and if you care about the city, if you care about your people, then treat them like family, actually like family, these are people, these people have souls, just like y'all planned to, thank you.
I just want to break up, because I understand the frustration that it is, you know, I have worked firsthand with homeless many years ago, so it's not that, I don't think that the city is sweeping under the rug, the homeless, we have a very important forefront telling of the needs that are there, we haven't even gone like Mr. Jones said, beyond the city, because you know that most of the people that are here are often in Brunswick, they come from New Brunswick, because they came here, drove off here, they come here because of the services that we have, whether is it enough, it's never enough, but, and I don't see, and I'm just frustrated, I'm trying to understand that in terms of why is it that you do a great job, that's excellent, but why can't, you know, there's other people doing, join them, you know, what is the, I don't know what is the barrier that is not allowing you to join the coalition, the homelessness, we work with churches, we do all of this, so I don't know what is the separation, when we are working with one goal, and everybody's working towards, you know, addressing the issues of homelessness, we should be working at one, instead of working in silos or with different agendas, so you got to come together and agree, you know, I mean, with how things are being doing, but that's why you need to put yourself in the middle, you know, in the center of this, and try to work, not just once, don't come out, I'm not sure if you made it, Mr. Jones, you said that only during the winter you hear from, and I know Mr. Harris, I think he's about to, but, so we have to come together and see what it is that we're trying to do, that could complement, and work with the agencies, not only in the city, but also in the county, that are doing great work for the homeless population, and again, it's not enough, it's never enough, and I take a little bit of offense a little bit when you said that, because you don't take care of all the homelessness that we do here, because I know I do, so, and I have worked with them, and I see them, so, that's not an accurate description of what we do and what we have been doing here, but, Kate, Kate, do you want to say something, do you want to add something?
But I won't say, so, I'll just say this, so, there's several municipalities that this conversation could be had, and that can be, I think Hound Park is a perfect example where pressure needs to be applied, when you think about feeding the homeless at the train station, the reason the train station is shut down at night now is because there was feeding going on at the train station, and nobody was cleaning up, and they were getting in confrontation with the custodial, one person that was there, as a result of that goodwill, with not the follow-up piece, the train station that was open twenty-four hours now shuts down in the evening, nobody can be in there, all right, and you send all those people out into, into the streets that were using the train station, the idea that we somehow take this lightly is just, is not true at all, we actually stay in these shelters from seven PM to seven AM, then come to work the next day, and we have families, and pertaining to homelessness, my family has been homeless, we stayed in the Full Town Park a lot in the car, and slept there until everybody was out of school, and then we hightailed to South Jersey, Sickville, every day for almost two years, so the idea that we can't relate is totally false, I would add that, again, the city of New Brunswick, while we don't pat ourselves on the back for the work that we do, we have the most food pantries in the county, we, again, we have the most sheltered beds in the county, that's hands down, we have the most transitional housing in the county, we have 211, it's here, you have a lot of homeless individuals that need to be on a list for 211, but don't have a phone to contact 211 to make sure that they're on the list, or receive that phone call from 211 saying, hey, your name's been picked, so what do you do, you stick around, you stay in New Brunswick, you go to the soup kitchen three times a day, you go to our pantries, you try to do anything possible to make sure that your name can, you can reach that phone call, we have the one-stop shop, where we're doing things around getting people employment, or the birth certificate, resume training, we just did the partnership with NJ Bill, with NJ Reentry, and now we're getting the information that we're going to be receiving a lot more individuals who are getting out of correctional facilities, that are going to be needing housing, and also going to be needing to finish their program, and they don't, you know, we're overwhelmed, so again, I say yes, there are more things that we can do, we do have a coalition, the, one of the challenges with our coalition is, you can't be a client and be a partner, and that was some of the issues that we were running into, because there's privileged information there, that was one of the challenges we were running into, Mr. Harris will tell you that, has that been resolved, I do not know, but we have a coalition meeting once a month, coming home, we just had our board meeting two days ago, we have a Code Blue meeting, we check in periodically with all our resources, and then we have ARM and several other communities that are doing the work, so it's not a situation of how do you, you got to find your role, play a role in the team, and, I mean, we can do this all year round, what we also glaze over is, while winter is freezing, we lose a lot of folks storing winter homelessness, that's when people like you and I direct our attention to homelessness, because it's cold, it's a given season, personally, Elijah's Promise say that's when the sinners want to repent, that's when they want to get, but for us, we know that homelessness is a year-round thing, hunger is a year-round thing, how do we make sure that we advocate for these folks all year round, it's not just something where, you know, the first frost hit, and now we want to be, you know, champions for the homeless individuals, we want to do this all year round, so we're more than willing to partner with anybody, but the idea that we're taking this lightly is just completely false, and I'm willing to speak to any and everybody, whenever, wherever.
Come in, both, I'm giving a speech, I'm in both my freedom. Excuse me, sir, excuse me, you're at a quarter, excuse me, no, he's stretching at the chair, excuse me, you're out of order right now, can you please relinquish the microphone, can you please relinquish the microphone, I'm asking you, no, you're out of order right now, you're out of, you're out of order right now, you are out of order right now, you know, sir, you are out of order right now.
I am proud of the continuing care of Lewis County Human Service Advisory Council.
Can you please relinquish the microphone?
So I work with the whole entire county.
So I work with the whole entire county. I've also been a member and woman with the executive director of Eliza Thomas's House in Green Bay. I'm on this every day, part of my English, but I'm on this every day. It's not live publicly to make yourself look good. First of all, people just die in this street right now. And if I'm not effective, then how did I get someone to home for twenty-two years in a cemetery? Out of that. And every solution in the city is an emergency shelter from seven at night to seven in the morning. We have plenty of volunteers. ARM has just popped up on the scene since two years ago. I've been on this since two thousand and three, effectively getting people housing and whatnot. So.
You are out of order.
You're not, you're, you're violating people's human rights. You're violating the first amendment, all those type of things. Take it how you want to say it, but you need to come see me and we need to work on the community that you, because the continuum care has gotten this homeless trust for money, this homeless trust for money from Colin, from Governor Phil Marson's spot. I'm invoking my freedom of speech.
No, you're not, no, you're out of order right now.
No, not, you, you address me personally. You address me personally, so I'm rebuttling you.
He was addressing, no, he was addressing me, because my name was mentioned several times.
You were, you were looking directly at me while you were speaking. So I'm rebuttling this. So S-ten-eight-eight is the law, that was annual two thousand and seventeen. It is in law, it's a law. Twenty-four hours prior, you're supposed to release the paperwork to the government.
Playing it simple. If you, we're gonna relinquish, you don't.
And that's why I'm in a situation, that's not valid. That's not valid either. Because they can sign a HEFA, and they can sign a releasing information. And because sort of, thank you for the time, hope y'all got that, it's a fact. Look it up. God bless all y'all.
Good evening, Matt Smith, I'm the resident of one-two-three Livingston Avenue. Um, before I comment on the homeless situation, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the two retiring, um, city workers for their dedication. I know that personally, Administrator McLaughlin, or, excuse me, just Laughlin.
Oh, Laughlin.
Um, you know, no, no easy task of taking the seven hundred-plus petitions we submitted to city council and verifying them in under two weeks to advance and ordinate a program to get New Brunswick on a path to one hundred percent clean renewable energy for the city. So I just wanted to thank the administrator for, for his work and wish you both, um, all the success moving forward.
Let me just say that, that thanks goes to the city clerk, Dana Bracy, he's the one that handles petitions.
Thank you, and thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
I also, you know, want to recognize that it seems like there's a lot of work that the city is doing to address homelessness, and I thank Keith for his commitment to the issue. Um, you know, I, I do think that when it comes to homelessness, this isn't a political issue, right? No one wants to see people freezing outside, um, and dealing with that. And, you know, I, I do believe, um, Keith, when he says that the, the city is committed to addressing this problem, part of it is, you know, this is a huge crisis, right? And so, New Brunswick has limited resources and can only do what they can do. And that's why I think it is so important to, um, leverage community partners. And it sounds like there's a coalition in place. Um, so I'm just wondering if, if there's like, um, a next coalition meeting date set or if there's some, if there's somewhere to go, if I have more, more info for, for folks who are interested in supporting.
Coalition meets second Thursday of every month at two-thirty at Lodge Promise.
Second Thursday of every month, two Thursdays, or two-thirty Lodge Promise. Great. sorry, I just want to make sure I get that. The other, um, the other question I had is just around the, um, the statute, I guess this is Governor Chris, going back to Chris these days, that set the state, um, temperature requirement twenty-five degrees for code blue. Um, is there like a, a statute number or, um, or a name of the law or anywhere that we can?
I can get it for you. The county, it's, it's twenty-five, twenty-five degrees.
Yeah.
Uh, the county calls the code blue, they send out the, the, uh, numbers for the week. Uh, unfortunately, we, we stuck to our number that we've been holding for several years now.
Okay.
Uh, just because we are the, uh, we are the center of it all. Uh, so you go to code blue, uh, let's say if eight municipalities have code blue, chances are we still gonna come to New Brunswick anyway because where are you gonna go once code blue is over? You know, if you're in code blue in Saraville, where are you going after you leave seven AM in your facility? Uh, if you're in code blue in Plainsboro, where are you going after you get out of there? If you're in code blue in New Brunswick, chances are you can go to a dozen different places to make sure that you stay warm or to receive your services. So, uh, while other municipalities call code blue, we go to just, at twenty-five, we go to serve this best in our best interest, because we're also not funded by anybody, to make sure that we kept, uh, our number the same, uh, and we try to do the best for the municipality, but.
And does that keep us in compliance with the state law?
I would say so, because we, we report to the county, we report to the state.
So they know that we're.
Yeah, 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 definitely. And we, like I said, we're the only municipality that actually reports our code blue to, uh, 211. Nobody else reports their code blue to 211. So, uh, if you don't know where the code blue is, you will never find it. We have people that walk past a code blue in the skyway to get to New Brunswick only to find out that our code blue was full and there was a code blue in the skyway, but they never knew it because of the metal in us, by design.
Okay. Um, great, yeah, no, I, I think that, you know, this is the, not the start, it's the start for me, you know, recognizing I'm new to this, but, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged that, um, there is an opportunity, uh, to, to join the conversation around what New Brunswick is doing. And, um, you know, I just think that it's important to put like the emotion aside for a minute. This is a very, obviously a very, um, sensitive subject, particularly I can only imagine for someone who's experienced homelessness and felt like they didn't have access to the resources they need. Um, but I think the best pathway to move forward is to just, um, share what everyone is doing on the issue today and find ways that we can, that we can work together. Um, so yeah, I, I look forward to, to hopefully being able to join that, um, the next coalition meeting. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Hi, we're at Daniel Moore, two thirty-three Somerset Street. I would like to come in between speaking about, for the both of you, when it comes to homeless, due to where I did mention it, due to where I said, wow, Black Friday, I was wondering why wasn't it a code blue? Because I think it was extremely cold. And, uh, while you said that code blue is twenty degrees, I have to say that is very low. Maybe it's possible you can raise it a, a little higher for code blue. But I will say that, wow, uh, that New Brunswick does help because, wow, last year I gave them A plus how they really helped. And so many other volunteers, well, they really did help with the homeless feeding, keeping them warm. I have to say, there is people out there also, I will say her name is Stephanie Williams, due to where, over the weekend, over to the parks, she was giving out, she cooked chicken and rice, giving out to the homeless, giving out dinners, giving, passing out coats. You do have people who are willing to, to help out. I have to say, I will even help out, but I, I took another step, because I'll get to that. But yes, you do have people helping, but like I said, maybe you can just raise the temperature, uh, what the temperature could be for code blue. Is that possible?
Uh, something to be discussed. I also add that we do on days of code blue, we, uh, senior center as well as, uh, New Brunswick Blackbird is open all day, uh, from nine to five. And then we have a deal with Eliza's Promise where they take, uh, they open an hour earlier for us as well. And they also provide transportation for homeless individuals from, uh, Eliza's Promise Soup Kitchen to the code blue side.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I did come down here with a little disappointment. Again, wow, it's been almost two months now with Livestock Avenue with the streetlights. Wow, what only three lights were fixed, that was in front of the sheriff's office, Livestock and Reed, where I, I even went to the county meeting the beginning of this month to mention it to them. Why, why this seems so hard for something to be done for Livestock Avenue?
More question for PSENG, but frankly, we've taken Miss Moore's list each time and immediately pulled those poll numbers into PSENG. So I, um, I'm sorry that they haven't responded as fast as we'd like or we would like, but please don't interpret that as a lack of interest on our part.
Oh, I, I know, but I'm just saying, wow, maybe something can be done, because like I said, what, it's been over two months. I know you did your job internally, where like I said, what, I can mention each one that where the lights are still out. I thank you for fixing maybe three, and I thank you for fixing the lights on Jersey Avenue also. But like I said, with these locations in dangerous areas, pitch dark, where yes, it's very important that these lights be back on again soon. If you can do, put, put it through for me, please. Thank you.
Or we submit her, uh, list to PSENG, hopefully they can be responsive.
Thank you. Then also I would, I'd like to say thank you to the fire, the fire department. You did a great job with helping North Brunswick, putting out the fire, fire, due to where, I hope there is plenty of parts out for that, due to where a lot of people lost their stuff. I don't mind helping out the homeless, but I, I donated a big load of stuff for the people in North Brunswick, due to where it is Christmas and how they did lose a lot. But I will say thanks to New Brunswick, where you really did look out for, uh, North Brunswick. I will say thank, thank you for the fire department also for dealing with hanging wires, helping, helping those with that. Thank you. Which like I said, also that's another thing, Mr. Laughlin, where I still won't forget about that, like I said, with hanging wires, and I, I thank you on that for speaking up about that. And then al-also, I will say for council member Es-Escobar, where one thing I have to say, out of, out of all these years, this year, I will say thank you, due to where you're, you're the person, due to where, when something needs to be discussed, where how, whether it's something we don't want to hear, we don't agree or whatever, but due to where, how you have joy in you, how you're the person that really communicates with a person the right way. Like I said, even if it's a disagreement, and I thank you for that. Maybe some other ones will look into it, but like I said, joy, heart, it's all in you, and I will say thank you for, for things on that. Then also, um, I realize that you did pass out the, the New Year's, uh, for garbage recycling. And my question is, okay, due to where, if you're saying a person does not load their garbage the correct way, what, will it not be picked up? Do they get a ticket or what?
I don't think it's. They're subject to being ticketed if they put the garbage out too early or put it out on the long day or, um, I don't think.
I don't know if Miss Moore's referring to the recycling, recycling regulations that are coming down in the county. Those have to be placed yet from our city ordinance perspective. But one thing I know they are not going to allow is you cannot put your commingled recyclables in plastic bags, they have to be loosely canned. And our ordinance, in the process of revising, will provide for first, second, third warnings before any fine or penalty could be imposed. But we get fined from the county if, if the recycling isn't, isn't collected properly. So we have to enforce that at a user level.
Okay, then, would I say for a two-family, uh, house, what is the limit for garbage cans? Or recycling cans?
I don't know what time I had. Mrs. Phil was here and I think she may have left. She would know that, she, she lives and believes that inclination. Unfortunately, we can get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing, I, it's been a little while, I haven't been able to thank her. Her name is Miss Jennifer Losky. She's a teacher, where she was supposed to be going to Livestock School in New Brunswick, where she was the teacher that had such a good heart, where she gave over five hundred dollars worth of gift to kids, to the students and all. Uh, like I said, I just give her a, a compliment, due to where, like I said, she has heart. God bless her. Due to where, uh, she is a teacher at Livestock School now, is that correct?
Yes.
But she was actually from Patterson, where she came from Patterson, and yes, due to where she told me that I did want to say thank you to her for the good heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Good evening, um, I'm Mr. Soto, um, I'm just here, um, to let, um, the council know that I am aware of a bill that it's, um, for code blue is, um, thirty-two degrees and, um, they use it, um, only twenty-two degrees and, you know, we are, I'm homeless and we out there, you know, we suffer, you know? And, um, I would like to see if they could, um, do something about that, if the council would do something about that, because it's really cold out there. That's all I got to say.
Good evening. First of all, I think, um, I want to say it was a really nice event at the church on Sudan Street. Um, I think it's nice, I think New Brunswick really does a lot of for the community in here compared to other cities where we have gone and seen. I think, uh, towards 2019, it's gonna be a new year, um, new ideas in plan, and we hope this improves the city.
Can you give the name of the reporter?
Uh, reporter Carlos Ramirez with New Brunswick today. And as I was mentioning, I hope we have new, better things for 2019. Um, my first question is, did the housing authority pay their water bill? Which I believe is at two hundred and ninety-three thousand already.
They, um, they made a partial payment today. Uh, they are, um, they believe the, um, the billing, store wood and store fee are inaccurate. They've tested the meter, which proved it to be inaccurate. We told them we would sit down and, um, analyze the account, but they gave us a good faith payment today of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Alright, thank you. My second question is, what is a deputy chief position in New Brunswick Police Department?
What is it? It is, um, uh, a, um, superior officer position. It is, uh, it has the same rank as, um, uh, the deputy director title. It's on our management ordinance. Um, the, uh, it would be a position that is superior to the rank of captain. Uh, only captains could compete for the, uh, the title. Um, and I believe the mayor is looking at some reorganization of his management team, of course, in 2019. Uh, he may be doing the same, um, within the ranks of the police department.
Alright, thank you. Well, to you and to the person retiring, we hope you have helped your community, helped you feel proud of your work. I've seen New Brunswick come a long way. I remember when I was just a little kid, I got involved coming here because I saw some things, and I think New Brunswick has come a long way. And in terms of helping the homeless community, I think there has been work done, and I think we can do better to help everyone and the community at large. So for that, thank you for your service and to people. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Before we do that, real quick, I just want to say thank you to the police, New Brunswick Police Department, to the New Brunswick Fire Department, especially represented by the Latino firefighters. We did, they mentioned about the Christmas party that would be for the children, as to that's really culture. We have five hundred and twelve kids that we're going to toy with, you know, that they are going to toy, and we have a thousand people at ten-day event. So thank you, this was our twenty-fifth year. So thank you again to the police and fire department for the help. Thank you.
Once again.
Motion to adjourn.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.